Good evening. I'm calling the Columbia County Board of Commissioners, May 21st, 2024 meeting to order. Ask Commissioner Couch to open us with an invocation.
Thank you. Please bow your heads. Your heavenly Father, we're so thankful for this day and for this time together to conduct the county's business. Lord, we ask for a hedge of protection around our sheriff's officers, firefighters, and EMS workers. With us now as we work through these agenda items and help us to do all things in your will, in your most holy and precious name, I pray, amen.
Please stand for the pledge. Let the record show, we have a full quorum of commissioners. Commissioners, you have the minutes from the May 7th, 2024 commission meeting in your package. If you had a chance to review them, I'll accept a motion to approve them.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve both the Board of Commission meeting minutes and the Budget Public Hearing Meeting minutes from May 7th, both as written and presented. Second?
Any questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. The agenda is set. We have no special recognitions, who will jump right into the consent agenda. Commissioners, you have the consent agenda in front of you. Each item on this agenda has been through the necessary committees and received the necessary votes to be placed on this agenda. If they still meet with your approval, I'll accept one motion to approve them all.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept all of the consent agenda items as presented. Second?
Any questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. On to the debate. Mr. Malir, I believe you have the first item.
I make a motion to approve appointing the newly elected District III Commissioner, whoever he may be at the end of the night, as Chair of the Public Works and Engineering Services Committee and Vice Chair of the Community and Emergency Services Committee at his next, after he has sworn in.
I hope you all voted. Do you all have hands? No, I'm just kidding. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more here. I make a motion to approve the contract renewal, number two, with the MedNow Urgent Care for Employee On-Site Clinic and Medical Center. Second?
Mr. Kennedy, we had a little bit of information on that before.
Yes, sir. So, this is the second contract renewal for the MedNow Urgent Care that we have for our employees. It's both an onsite and offsite service that we run. There were some questions when this came to committee, two different questions. One pertained to whether or not the sites listed, the offsites that were listed, were on the contract, actually specified in the contract, and they are. The other was dealt with the finances and whether or not it was advantageous for us to do this, provide this service to our employees, and I think that information was provided to you. And even though it's an estimation at points, that in fact, that it is. And also along those same lines, there's some other costs that you really can't figure into it, and that is just the fact that it saves our employees' time to be able to go to the either onsite clinic that we run in G2, or on the offsite clinics that are spread throughout the city.
Well, it is impressive, over 2,700 visits, so we're definitely saving money on the health plan with the counties.
Yes, sir.
I believe we have a motion, second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. On to you, Commissioner Skinner.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. File RZ240501. I make a motion to approve the request for conditional use for massage for property located at Tax map 081A and parcel 030.
Second?
Sterling?
Yes, this is a conditional use for massage as indicated here in the May 18th, full-service hair salon and spa. They didn't initially request it when they were rezoned back in April of 2022, however, they're here now. It'll just be a space within that business.
Questions? All the state guidelines?
They do. They have identified a massage therapist who does have a current Georgia's license and then have to get that MOL through the Planning Commission.
Motion is second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Next is file RZ240502. I make a motion to approve the request for the conditional use for mining vehicle repair for window tinning business for property located at Tax map 172 parcel 231G.
Second?
This is a vehicle window tinning business going into this newly completed building here. They'll have two employees. Operational hours are nine to five Monday through Friday. Property was owned back in 2021 and rezoned to M1, which is also approved. Happy answer.
Questions? Is a motion, second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Next is?
Fill up, sir.
Yes, sir. File RZ240503. I make a motion to approve the request for the rezoning from RA to S1 for property located at Tax map 009, portion of parcel 010, subject to the conditions enumerated in the May 2nd, 2024 Planning Commission report.
Second?
Had a couple of people asked to speak. Mr. Frederick Carpenter? If you will, sir, please state your name and address for the record and take five minutes.
Thank you. Frederick Carpenter. I'm at 7107 Bill Dorn Road, which is the property adjacent to the property, requesting the rezoning. I just wanted to state that I'm not against archery, archery activity. I believe in participants having fun, spectators enjoying themselves, and I think it's a wholesome activity for children also. Now, I've owned the property next door for 44 years, and I've had an airport there, been there 65 years, and I've managed to own that airport accident-free and incident-free for that period of time. Now, folks involved next door are experts on what they do, archery. I have no problem with that, but I feel that talking about qualifications for archery, or even for my airport, is only talking about information to hide the issues here. Now, issues have come to light. Code enforcement people were the first ones to notice violation of rules that have been occurring for a number of years, and there's presently a cease and desist order for the archery activities in place at the moment. But the Planning Commission staff addressed everything, and they quickly identified the real important issues here. Don't have anything to do with qualifications, but they're issues of danger and safety. And even with my airplane skills, can I guarantee no accidents with all my experience over the years? No, I can't do that, and I feel that neither the best archers in the country, which they claim they are, they can't prevent misfires or reckless conduct occurring either, when sometimes up to 200 people gather out there for their events. Right here's an example. This arrow left their property, crossed the property line, went right in front of my residential house there, and buried itself into the ground not more than 20 feet away from the center line of my runway. Now, the Planning Commission has done a fine job of giving us examples of how they can reduce the danger and safety, mainly to my adjacent property where I have animals, horses, livestock. I have a driveway that runs right down the four acres that they're using, and that arrow went right across the property line. That can happen. Accidents will happen. I can't prevent accidents with airplanes. They can't prevent accidents with archery, particularly with children involved, and sometimes with all those people, they might have reckless people, misfiring, et cetera. Now, the conditions that Planning Commission staff recommend are generally pretty good, but I feel that those conditions need to be stiffened, particularly where they specified having an eight-foot solid wood fence along approximately half of the area where they use for activity to protect my property. I don't feel that that's enough. I think they're all out there, why, you can solve this tonight just by requiring them to extend that fence across the whole area there of the one side next to me, which is where they conduct the archery activity. That would solve the problem, isolation and separation. They could be happy over there. That would allow both archery activities and, on my side, the fence would separate us from my safety fears, and we could all coexist quite peacefully. However, if you are determined to install a commercial business in this pristine agricultural zoned area, I certainly hope that if you approve it, will please assure that no activity will occur until all of the conditions that have been specified by the Planning Commission have been fulfilled. You might ask, are there other concerns too? And yes, there are. I hope you know that the 25 acres involved is in a conservation easement approved by Columbia County and the State of Georgia. Now, that's for the full property. There's no exception for the four acres where the archery activity will occur. I don't think that's really quite fair, to put a money-making business there on conservation easement property. Who's subsidizing that? I am, as a taxpayer, maybe you are too, but the property owner there bragged to me a couple of months ago that their tax amount for property tax went from $2,900 a year all the way down to 230. Now, I don't feel that's fair, that you would put an exception on a conservation easement by allowing a non-agricultural zone commercial activity and business in this area. It's conservation easement. So, that's one of my main objections. They're interested in saving taxes, of course, who isn't? But they're also still interested in making a profit out there, and to approve this, you're going to allow that on a conservation easement. I don't feel that's right. Other thing that's not right is there's no sanitation facilities on this 25 acres at all. There's no water, no legal electricity, only jackbooted electricity that they run from another property. They have had food service out there, and there's not a single toilet anywhere. In the last year and a half particularly, I've seen no portable toilets rented for any of their activities, and sometimes there's 50 to 150, 200 people out there. This is not right. It's, Columbia County should be better than that. Going to allow this activity to go on, bring them up to code. I mean, you've got all kinds of codes they're not complying with. So, we have people violating rules in the past. They've been doing this for up to eight years. Finally, the code enforcement jumped on them about not having business licenses and using activities that don't comply with the zoning that's been out there for the 44 years I've lived out there and probably 50 before that. This is a pristine agricultural community, and now want to change it to have a commercial business there, money-making business. I think that's right, but I do appreciate your time to listen to me. I'll hope for the best, and hopefully, fears my family and I have for our animals and so forth from accidents and misfired arrows, that can happen, and I hate to see that, but...
Carpenter, can you touch the screen in front of you and show us where your property is in relation to this?
Let's see. North is to the right. All right, you see at the bottom, it says 30-foot buffer from 7107 Bill Dorn Road property. Now, that long strip on the bottom there is a long-range arrow and target part. My property is everything that would be below that on the screen I'm looking at, if that's the same one you're looking at. Right there where it says RZ240503 site plan.
Your airstrip is parallel to that buffer line?
Pardon me?
Your airstrip is parallel to the buffer line?
Yes, it is. It's all the way out here, it's 3,000 feet long, and it's, there we go. Okay, you can see the, see part of the airstrip right there, right next to the portion to be zoned. This property that they have is 25 acres, but they want to be right down there next to my barn, next to my animals, next to my airstrip, next to my residential house right there.
Can you mark that? Oh, 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 okay.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry.
A little bit north of that.
Okay, I was trying to make it be right next to it.
Where's the fence?
The, where they're talking about in the conditions, the fence would be give or take in this general area here.
Up a little bit.
It might be a little bit adjusted to the north, depending on where exactly that target range is, and is to have that fence be equal to that length plus the required distance behind it, about 75 yards in total length, 205 feet give or take.
Carpenter, are you asking that the fence, our length of the?
No, I'm asking that the fence where he just pointed out.
I think you can touch it.
Yeah, you can touch it.
Yeah, you can mark it, we can't.
Okay, right there. Just this lower portion here, just continue it on there alongside that portion where their activity is, and then if that's a solid fence, I have no objection.
How much further is that?
It's another 200 feet.
Yeah, I just measured, and kind of from this distance here to give or take about right here is approximately 500 feet, so again, a little more than, not quite double what was the recommendation.
It doesn't have to go up where he just pointed.
Yeah.
I want it to go down to the bottom, right there, that corner. That's, that's the danger zone, because all of their activity takes place right in there, essentially.
Scott, can you go over the additional conditions?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, so the conditions that were brought forth by the Planning Commission include targets shall be in that place within 50 feet of property lines. Targets shall not be oriented towards adjacent properties, whether developed or undeveloped, unless the target areas are at least 75 feet from the property line. In all cases, in all other cases, shooting lanes must be parallel to the property lines or be oriented towards the interior site. Solid fence with a minimum height of eight feet shall be installed along the eastern property line, parallel to the proposed target range location. Fence must be continuous for the entirety of the range for the shooting line to a point 75 yards from that shooting line. No target shall be located on this range in the areas not parallel to the fence. Remainder of this east property line shall be the natural buffer as proposed by the applicant. Privacy fence in condition three and the proposed natural buffer must be installed prior to the range being reopened. And the last one is the range shall be utilized only during daylight hours. No artificial lighting on the site is permitted. So again, just real quickly, so this is range, let's say, one, this is range two, no, it's called range three, so this is the one where the fence and then the landscaping would have to be done.
But the conservation easement, if you have a business, does that affect that?
That would be something for the Tax Assessor's Office to determine. Most likely, there's going to be a determination on whether or not that change in use violates the conservation. It may require them to, it may break the conservation, and then them having to subsequently reapply for a portion of that site that would remain conservation with whatever their regulations are.
Yeah, he'd have to go back and pick up the tax.
Right, they would be responsible for...
He would have to go back.
If there was a break, they would be responsible for that, taxes on that portion.
And this is a licensed for-profit money-making business, not a nonprofit 4-H club.
Far as, yeah, as far as we understand, for-profit.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. James Martin?
Take your name and address for the record, sir.
Yes, sir. James Jake Martin, 7123 Bill Dorn Road. All right, very good story. All right, so I've prepared some remarks. I think I addressed everything that my neighbor has talked about, so, all right, so, some of this I covered with the zoning commission as we went through our first part of this, but understand that I am very passionate about archery, all right? Archery is my life, the way that most people follow football, basketball, et cetera. While most of you were probably watching Harlem, you know, win their baseball game, I was watching the collegiate nationals that were in Statesboro, Georgia this year. So, I know, I know.
You committed that in public.
But they were in our home state, so we had to watch, all right? I did go back and watch the highlights, all right? But understand, archery carries such a deep passion, it's what I credit was saving my life. It was my therapy as recovering, as a veteran. That was my treatment for PTSD. I truly believe it's the only reason I'm still here, and I use that now to give back, all right? The Army's what brought me and my wife to Columbia County, all right? But the great area and the community is what kept us here after we both retired from the Army, all right? After getting settled in Appling in late 2012, I decided that I wanted to give back, get more involved in the community outside of the fence of Fort Gordon, and I knew archery was the way that I wanted to accomplish this, all right? Soon discovered that the Columbia County 4-H archery program was in desperate need of coaches, and it didn't take me long to find the group leaders and jump in. This endeavor led me down the road of coaching certifications, continued education, and since then, I have earned the Georgia 4-H Safe Sport Coaching Certification. I'm one of only 400 USA archery Level 4 coaches in the country, certified through the National Field Archery Association and the Scholastic 3D Archery Advanced Instructor/Trainer Certification. I'm certified as a national judge in both USA archery and the National Field Archery Association. I have served as state coordinator for the Georgia Scholastic 3D Archery Program for four years, while also serving on National Rules Committee, where I oversaw the safe operations for thousands of youth archers around the country. I'm also a certified Georgia DNR hunter safety instructor. I've hosted multiple voluntary archery events at North Columbia Elementary School's carnival. I've assisted two Columbia County schools and one McDuffie County school in creating and running their national archery and school programs. I've set up and run archery programs for homeschool covenants, Boy Scout, Girl Scout troops. Have an exceptional history with zero safety issues, no accidents, no injuries through thousands and thousands of hours of practice and tournaments. All right, during the renewal of my business license for 2024, I was notified that my business could not hold any events that were zoned, that were on property zoned RA. So, in communication with zoning, I reassured them I would hold, I would hold no business on any property there. So, our indoor season is typically, you know, November to March. We use the Merchants County, we use the Merchants Association Fairground Building for our indoor season, and then we do some stuff at the Coyote Pavilion as well, which are both zoned properly, all right? So, I acknowledged and waived all team fees for the remainder of the season, of which the team would practice at 7131 Bill Dorn, all right? Therefore, conducting no business, since this is the date I've conducted no business at that address for 2024, all right? The loss of the dues to the team for a few months was worth keeping the kids together, being outside, socializing with their friends, all right? This was deemed to not be enough, and yet another complaint was received. All right, following that complaint, in coordination with the landowner, Ms. Stephanie, we decided the only way to rid ourselves of this issue was to have the practice range area rezoned S1. Therefore, I've applied to rezone approximately four acres from RA to S1 specific for the target archery range. All right, at the time, it appeared that was the only option that was available to us to keep the kids practicing and the program alive for the years to come. During the application process, we also navigated the Tax Assessor's Office because a property was entered in a wildlife conservation program last year. We now understand if the property is to be rezoned, it will be removed from the covenant and a penalty will be paid, all right? The Board of Tax Assessor has determined that nothing we have done yet has violated the covenant, and at this time, we're in good standing and continue to hold practices on the property as long as we do not charge them. And I do have the letter from the Tax Assessor's Office following the board meeting, all right? So, since then, the team has moved all non-practice functions, such as tournaments, to other venues which are properly zoned, such as the Wildwood Park. We continue at the Merchants Association's Fairgrounds, and in the end of this year, beginning next, we're actually using the Columbia County Expo Center for host a large indoor tournament, all right? So, the matter of the, this matter is a reference to location of practices for our outdoor season only, which typically runs from mid-March to mid-June, all right? That is the void we're trying to fill here with our club, all right? I've listened to all the completely false accusations from my neighbor, such as claims as misfired arrows and repeated trespassers, all right? He once again waved an object around claiming it was an arrow from a range that passed directly over the front porch of his residential home, all right? Anybody that knows archery knows that that was a crossbow bolt, and a crossbow bolt cannot be fired from a vertical arrow, all right? Crossbow bolt has three types of knocks, will not fit in any arrow that, any target bow or hunting bow that we use on our property, all right? I know where that bolt was fired from, because it was fired from the pole, fired from the front porch by one of the tenants of the multiple rental houses that he has on his property. I know this because after the tenant had lost three arrows in the airfield, he asked me to help him cite it in, and it's only one of the two tenants that have lived in his rental house that had crossbows that they used on that property, all right? I wouldn't expect my neighbor to know that, considering he spends roughly nine months of the year out of the country and isn't on the property, all right? I just want to continue providing archery and an archery program for our youth and not put Ms. Stephanie, the landowner, in a position to cause her trouble after all of her generosity, all right? I'm absolutely willing to continue volunteering my time and to run and host these practices at no charge. I'm also willing to construct a fence as recommended by the zoning board. I just do not know if it can financially support all the requirements that come from the rezoning. As we continue down this path, the construction of a fence, the rezoning, the surveying, et cetera, we're reaching neighborhoods of $15,000, all right? Nobody's chasing a profit, I promise you. If I could figure out how to turn archery into profit, I'd retire for the second time, all right? What I'm asking the board to consider, after a meeting with the Tax Assessor's Board, I'm asking that you consider denying my application for rezoning, as I don't believe it is needed to continue team practices at 7131 Bill Dorn Road, as long as no fees or dues are collected as stated by the Board of Tax Assessors, all right? If this is not something the board can support, then I ask that you vote in favor of rezoning. We'll then determine if we can financially make this work. All right, understand, I have four, four and five volunteer coaches. We have roughly, you know, 15 to 20 kids, depending on the time of the year. Half of them coaches, or half of them kids do not pay dues either because their parents are a coach, or they financially can't, and we figure out how to do it. We're not making any money.
First, to deny it or to pass it?
Well, sir, what I would really like, I don't believe this needs to be rezoned if we're not doing commercial business after a meeting with the Tax Assessor's, and we would like the board to confirm that if we are not conducting business on this property, that it could stay zoned RA, and we will gladly waive all team dues, monthly fees, et cetera, and have our team practices out there twice a week for that period of March to June.
That means you wouldn't be able to have events out there?
We have already moved all events off this property. We're just looking for a place to have practice. The different divisions within the county have been more than gracious of giving us places to go do it. Much harder on us, I have to load all the equipment up in the trailer, haul it, take a day off work, set it up day before, and but if that's what it takes to do this, then that's fine. Losing a couple thousand dollars a year in the monthly dues that we would collect is much more financially doable than any other option.
May I see your letter from the Tax Assessor's Office?
I think you have a copy.
You got a copy? You got a copy?
Maybe not.
I don't think so. This is sad, this is sad.
Yes, sir. Stephanie, certified male.
If we deny it, by the way, this is a first.
Yes, sir.
For me, I've only been here 10 years. Go work with me.
Yes, sir, understand. First, first for me as well, so.
If we had denied it, that's not going to automatically give you the right. Can't help me here, God. Can't say if we deny it, then that gives you the right to keep doing what you're doing. I admit I don't know the answer to that.
The way I understand it, sir, and again, somebody else.
You're the expert.
Outdoor recreation is allowed on RA, on RA property, as long as it is not a commercial business or for-profit. No different than inviting all your friends over to your house to do something there.
I think is important. No events.
Yeah, I think that's, that's clearly on the table. There would be no sanctioned events or, you know. I think the, the only question that I would have prefer a legal opinion to back it up would be the idea that non-sanctioned, you know, friends coming over to shoot a couple of arrows and, you know, hang out and have a good time. I mean, these are, these are the club activities that are occurring. This would be like, you know, having a little league baseball team and, you know, practicing in a field out behind you versus having, you know, six or seven of your friends' teams coming over and practicing throughout the, you know, the season, as, as it were, so. I could see, I could see the argument both ways, that clearly there's, you know, no business activity occurring, there's no money transferring, no business. Yet I'd be concerned that there is, you know, structured team event activities occurring, even if it is just practice. You know, that, that becomes sort of the challenge is, is, you know, it's not just the eight, 10, 12, 20 kids, however many it is. It's also the parents and the, you know, the other activities that.
If it's rezoned, does that knock it out of? Letter says if it's rezoned, it's knocked out of.
Conservation, they would have to then reapply.
According to the letter from the tax assessor's office, it is not a breach unless it's a business.
Correct.
You make money, so. But that's from the tax assessor's office.
Right, their views aren't, you know.
That's right, it's not a zoning.
Yeah, it's not a zoning issue.
But if it's a club, and clubs are nonprofit. I know those are, those are.
Yeah, again, I, I can certainly see the argument in both, in both manners. I think this is probably a situation where they're out there shooting, you know, for a couple months. Probably not the, you know, probably does not require, and they're not collecting any money, and they're not having events and all that other stuff. Probably not, you know. It does not require the rezoning, but there would have to be restricted hearings to that and.
Paul, what's your opinion?
His code enforcement would be the.
Right.
On the business, I, I can speak to it from the business license standpoint. If it is a, not a business, so therefore there wouldn't be no violation for him being out there on the property doing that. Granted, you have the permission from the landowner, the property owner. Now, whether the activity triggers anything, and I don't believe from one sport to another that you could, you can split that hair to determine whether it is viable or not. So, I mean, it would be no different from her family or his family being out there utilizing the property in that aspect. But like Mr. Sterling said, I think it would be very prudent to have a legal weigh-in on that prior to a formal decision being made.
I sense, so you do have a business.
I, I do.
This is not the business, but there's.
Correct, correct. I run a, a business called Top Knock Archery. I do individual coaching and stuff like that in the past. Really have stopped doing that. I've kept my business so that I was paying taxes properly. If we were collecting club dues, you know, they weren't going in my, as we say, going through your wallet.
Club is completely separate from the business.
It is, yes, yes. Well, let me kick back, I want to be clear. The, the team is sponsored by my business. All right, but yes, all of my, all the dues that come in money-wise as of, prior to this, went into the business account, which is in what buys the targets, et cetera.
I'm going to suggest that we ask to push this to the next meeting so we can get a legal opinion. We don't want to send you down a bad path.
Yes, sir.
And, and deny it, then ultimately you can't do it, but then, again, if you agree, then I would recommend we postpone it till the June third, fourth, at the next commission meeting, we have a chance to get a legal opinion so we don't wreck.
I'll be back.
Mr. Chair, do I need to postpone?
Yeah, we do have a motion. We'll have to rescind that motion. Draw that motion.
I withdraw it and make a motion to postpone till June the fourth.
Let us get an opinion.
Absolutely.
Get an opinion, we can always follow back up with you before the meeting.
Yes, sir. All right, thank you all, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Second to vote.
Oh, that's right. Got to vote on that, don't we?
Second.
All right, so the, you withdrew your second, you made a postpone, you seconded that, all in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Onto the next item.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, file RZ 240504. I make a motion to approve the request for rezoning from R1 to R2 for property located at tax map 060 parcel 013B, subject to the conditions enumerated in the May 2, 2024 Planning Commission Report. And the buffer along Callaway Road Extension shall be supplemented with evergreens shown on the preliminary plat. Species and types of evergreens are to be reviewed with planning prior to the installation.
Second.
All right, what you have before you is a rezoning request. Again, it's currently zoned R1. Request is to go to R2 zoning. The only access to this is from Callaway Road here off of Hereford Farm. What the condition talks about is the buffer that would be supplemented through this area up on, along Callaway Road. We are going to work with the developer if this is approved to adjust this location of the access to better offset and split that line a little bit with the adjacent properties. This is in the neighborhood zoned portion of the comp plan, so this fits within that general parameters.
And the applicant? Conditional.
I believe the owner of the property is not the applicant. The applicant is certainly looking for the zoning to be able to purchase the property.
Applicant?
Come on, yeah, come on down. Take your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Scott Johnson. I am the engineer for the applicant. Address is 371 Main Street.
Changing this from an R1 with the larger lots to an R. What is your reason asking for that?
Well, the, the R2 zoning, we feel like is, is more appropriate for the product that my client is looking to, looking to bring to market. Certainly consistent with other zonings around it, but ultimately it's just to increase.
So be able to do a development if it stays R1?
I'll have to ask my applicant, or ask the owner for that, and he's here. That's, that's.
You're speaking for Horton?
I am, as their engineer.
Would, would they be able to still do a, a development if it stayed R1? Or would this kill the?
Well, there's, there's someone from Horton here, if you'd like to speak to them, they can answer that.
Yes, I'd like to do that.
Jared Poe, 423 Four Wheeler Road in Martinez. To answer your question, not be able to do development if it remained R1?
And you would not build R1 homes on this parcel, on this property? You, you would not go forward with an R1 zoning, you would walk away from the deal?
That is correct. Any other questions? Any other questions? Motion is second on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Motion.
All right, sir, file RZ 240505. I make a motion to approve the request for the major S1 revision for property located at tax map 082B, parcel 158C, 1581, and 158E, subject to the condition enumerated in the May 2, 2024 Planning Commission Report.
Second. Questions?
Actually, I do have a couple of questions. Last time the applicant was in front of us, there were some questions about whether previous items left over from the previous project had been, had been satisfied. Can somebody on staff speak to whether all the EPA issues, the stormwater and runoff drainage items have been satisfied?
I do believe from the information I have received in the past that those items have been corrected, have been addressed.
Is there anything out, outstanding from the original revisions? There's been several revisions to this. The owner has come back several times asking for revisions. Have all of those items been satisfied? And Mr. Scott, can you tell us what, what exactly is the change from the last, from current to what they're asking for on this particular, what are we voting on?
Your, this, this area right here in particular had a large tower that was three stories on the east side, and then it was kind of a split level. East side had three stories, west side had four stories due to the topography. Approximately 180 units, independent living apartments were within that. This proposal now kind of still have that building, but it is reduced now down to about 100 units. And they've spread out within the confines of this area, 28 active adult cottages. This area up here was intended for medical office, now proposed for some independent living cottages. And this area here was independent living previously, and there's no changes to that. So overall, the total number of units will be, should you.
Permanently?
Yes.
And it's the old homestead, the, the structure there that's in, in disrepair, has it been removed?
It has not, to my knowledge.
That part of this?
That would be in this area, in my understanding. So yes, that would be removed as part of this revision. So when they move forward, should they be approved, they would move forward with this section here. They would certainly have to remove that structure in order to develop that as proposed.
What is the zoning for a nursing home as opposed to senior living?
Certainly do it in certain districts. Now, you can do that primarily, S1 is typically where we senior, although you can do C1.
C1.
I don't think you, you're, you're not being asked to change the zoning on this from a, from S1. It's, it'll remain S1, so it'll be locked in.
Right, no, but I was considering discussing making it C1.
You want to open, well, any, any other district would open it up to any of the uses within that district, so that would be the alternative, would be opening up to whatever other permitted uses would be allowed in that district, whereas in S1, they're locked into what is approved currently or what they're proposing to change with your approval.
And what's the total number of units at the end of this?
About 130. Five, I think, is what that.
Questions? The motion is second on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Three yes, one abstention. The next item. Matthew Paget.
Commissioner, commissioners, Matthew Paget, 3499 Heatherstone Way. Sorry, I never have to say it out loud, Martinez through 907. I'm here on behalf and representing Arav and Sanvi LLC, and Mr. Malley, and also I believe all parties in interest are here, being the property owner, representative from the developer, all, all parties. I'm not sure if the most recent drawings made it in. We did not receive them till late, and I did get them blown up specifically on the back here. The proposed building that is seeking the conditional use is all within the one acre of C2 as it is currently zoned. I'm not sure that this original drawing shows that as clearly. I'm happy to pass this forward if this may help. So we are seeking a, two requests, one being a full C2 rezoning of all the CC that is presently there, as shown on that red map a few slides ago, and then alternatively, that the conditional use C2 be limited to just the existing C2, no change to the other CC. So the proposal is a 15,000 square foot anchor tenant, as I would call it, and then two additional tenants, another which have any, any, anything else before the commission today. They're not seeking conditional use, nothing of that nature. So anchor tenant being that liquor store that would be the 15,000 square foot, being owned and operated by Mr. Malley, who is a Columbia County resident, been here since 2015. Kids go to school here, he pays taxes here. It's not a faceless corporation seeking to come in and put something else that we don't need, but this is a local business owner. He already operates stores in Richmond County. He's been seeking to get to Columbia County where he lives and, and, you know, hopefully would then be working. But we are, we are here seeking that conditional use C2 across the entire parcel, and then in the alternative, C2 limited to just the, I'm sorry, conditional use limited to just the existing C2. And as I indicated, all of the proposed building would be in the existing zoning line that, as it sits here today on that alternative request.
Matthew, I know of at least four homeowners in the subdivision back behind there that are against this. What, what would you say to them who have concerns about having a liquor store so close to their home?
I would tell them that we have done everything that is required of the new current zoning requirements by Columbia County that have passed in the last year. We're well within, and I've, I've got a drawing done up as well from Augusta Land Survey that shows that between the closest park being 1.2 miles away, closest church being 1.2 miles away, the closest school being Savannah River Cavity being 2,154 feet away, and the closest treatment center. Treatment centers of Augusta is 4.2 miles away, so I do think we have met every requirement as they have currently been passed by the county. We, we own and operate a liquor store in Richmond County, have never had any issues. I don't, I don't think that we would impose any additional strain. We certainly don't have any concern with, with whatever reasonable request would be made by those homeowners, but we are here simply trying to operate a business in C2 as it is zoned presently, and then additionally to continue to grow this area and continue to modernize some of this that I think has been left, you know, vacant, and certainly we want to turn this into productive land that is going to generate tax dollars for this county.
What is the closest liquor store to your home?
The closest liquor store to my home would be Toast Beverage, I believe, on Fierce Ferry.
I'm fortunate I have one toast and go take a right out of the gate, up at the corner of Fierce Ferry, Neves and Locks. Depends on the day of week. Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
More speakers? File RZ 240506. I make a motion to disapprove the request for the conditional use for retail package sale of distilled spirits for off-premise consumption for property located at tax map 068 parcel 002A, and the rezoning from CC to C2 for property located at tax map 0. and the rezoning from CC to C2 for property located at tax map 068, parcel, portion of parcel 002.
Second.
Other discussion? All in favor raise your right hand. Opposed? Ah, two to two, so motion down.
Next item, Mr. Chair. RZ 240507. I make a motion to approve the request for the conditional use for light industrial uses and rezoning from C2, the split zone TR and R2 to C3, for a portion of property located at tax map 072, parcels 0731 and 073E, subject to the conditions enumerated in the May 2, 2024 Planning Commission Report with the revision of condition number two. Shall read dumpster pickup shall be between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m.
Second.
Three folks asked to speak. John, Dan Ware. Take your name and address to the record, sir.
Daniel Ware, 553 Brander Mill. So I stand in opposition to this. I'm speaking for our homeowners association. Also, the residents that we have on that side of our subdivision are opposed to it because of several reasons, well, at least three reasons. No reason light, problems, disturbance of their, that'd be their backyard. Normally like that to be quiet and tranquil at all times. And during the winter months, of course, when the foliage is... That's going to be worse. The 40-foot barrier that they talk about being not going to be sufficient to keep that light and noise abatement for our residents there. The second reason is it's already zoned residential right now. We would prefer to have someone else's backyard in our backyard. That's a reasonable request. We'd like for that whole area to remain as residential, if that's possible. We have had some industry on the other side of the subdivision. They're collecting dumpsters at 5:30 in the morning, and security lights blaring all night long. So we don't want that to happen on that side of our community. The third reason is for the possible drainage issues that may occur because of this clearing. The drainage pit that's back there now is in disrepair and not functional, basically. We've had several residents with foundation problems resulting from water runoff from that area. It's all sloped down into our community as it is right now. They've had foundational problems and issues that they've had to repair at their own expense and to abate the drainage problems there. So we would be opposed to this action.
Carolyn, can you mark on here where the hot point is? Watershed.
Generally speaking, funds, direction. I think this is, this is the detention area the gentleman was referring to. Proposed drainage. That's the outfall structure. That's where that detention, and I think it's more of a sediment trap from initial clearing that occurred, generally speaking, in this area.
One of the conditions talks about the access road from Washington Road. If this is changed, would the commercial property have access to the neighborhood? Or would it only go out to Washington Road?
No, the current site doesn't have access to the neighborhood at this time. The only two access points, if you will, are Santa Drive out to Washington Road, and then there is access for this portion of the property out to Gibbs Road, but there is no access, Country Place and any of the development around there. The proposal, if I may, does not include the access out to Gibbs Road. That would not be included as part of this application and request. Their sole access would be up Santa Drive out to Washington Road.
But this would encapsulate that?
Correct.
That development, okay.
That's right.
Do you have the speaker's concerns where the noise from the dumpster?
Yep.
Light pollution? The two conditions?
Yeah, so as Commissioner Skinner referenced, the modification of the proposed condition for the dumpster pickup would now be from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., as I understand it. Second item in reference to the lighting, that all lighting on the site should be shielded and directed away from adjacent properties. Method of shielding should be provided with any building permitting. Prior to site plan approval, photometric plan showing readings of earl foot candles at the property lines with residential uses shall be provided. That should address residential concerns on the three sides that adjacent. Yeah, so they're currently showing a buffer here. They'll have to supplement, you know, the area as well.
And if this is denied, that can be?
Yeah, can you go back? I think it's back a slide maybe? One more. All right, so current zoning as it is now on the ground today is, obviously this is Washington Road, so the front half of that is basically B2 zone, same as what you have along Washington Road. And then the back half is TR zone or townhouses. Yes, the way that would likely develop is possible they could go through the C2 with permission, but realistically, the TR piece would go out to Gibbs Road via the access drive there, and then the commercial could be developed using Santa Drive as their access.
What fits into C2?
That drive-throughs and?
Retail drive-throughs. You know, that's your commercial you see up and down a lot of Washington Road.
There could be a Dairy Queen right there in Sunday's backyard.
Yeah, you could get drive-through, drive-through uses. I mean, Bojangles is out front, right there. Yeah, Bojangles and discount auto tires, things like that. Hardware. I think that was some of what you heard.
This would change it to a only those?
To the conditional use for the light industrial, which is what they're proposing, is office warehouse. And I will point out that the first proposed condition was outdoor storage of vehicles and materials will not be permitted on the site. So they would have to be contained within the buildings themselves.
Boy Smith?
Ecker Smith, live at 547 Brander Mill Road, which this property borders partially.
Will you touch on here and show us which one?
I can't see it on here, but there's another one with the concept plant, and it says Gerald J. Smith. I can't, I don't know exactly. All right, so?
Okay.
Nope, so I'm sorry.
547 right here.
In the corner, okay.
Right here. And the detention pond is not very far from our, over from our backyard. And when they originally cleared this years ago, we got flooded, and it took thousands of dollars to clean it up. And ever since then, even with the detention pond, which is now, we still get moisture issues and water coming down on us on heavy rains. So does our neighbor right next to us. It comes down on the other side from him, and it meets at our rear, our weir, in our backyards. And it can get overrun, and then, of course, it starts to flood from that way also. Not to mention, we're concerned about our property value decreasing, and the fact that we like to sit on our deck and enjoy dinner or lunch or breakfast, and we really don't want to look over and see a bunch of warehouses. I don't know if y'all would like that in your backyard either. But that is our concerns. Also, the lighting coming right into our backyard, noises over here at the Ace. It'll wake you up at 5:30 in the morning, and we live way over here. With them banging and all of that, so that is our concerns. Decreasing our property value and the flooding. And it does come down that way.
You prefer the townhomes?
I would prefer a townhome versus a warehouse with multiple people. And if it's light industrial, does that include 18-wheelers being able to come in and bring things? I don't know exactly what light industrial or the warehouse, what it would. And this is just a concept. What if they change it to something else? I don't, it's just concerning being a property owner. And if you ever want to resell, if you want to enjoy your property, and if they cut out all of the mature growth on this buffer, then that's going to take, that's going to let even more light and noise come in. And if they plant trees, that's wonderful, the more trees, the merrier for me. But it takes over 20 years for a tree to get to its full, full-grown height. And of course, the detention pond overflowing and runoff is the big concern.
That's okay.
And my mom here, as you know, doesn't get out much. She can't drive anymore, so the enjoyment of her property is really during the day.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for listening.
Douglas Q?
Next door neighbors. On that concept plant, I was just going to point, can I push on this or?
Sure.
So where they live, the Smiths live is in here, and that's where I live. This detention pond is here. That detention pond, if you look at it from an aerial map, you can't see it. There's trees in that pond out of this 40 feet high, it's all brush. The fear is if it's ever developed, detention pond's not cleaned out, it's going to flood right now.
Who owns that detention pond?
Those are property owners own it, who are the general developers of this water area.
Every subject we need to, John, they're going to clean that out.
Yep.
You physically, I've been up there, you physically can't see it 100 feet away. It's just brush and trees. That's a big concern of our properties. I'm next to the Smiths. A lot of flooding comes down there. Get flooding out, Gibbs Road comes down, and then it comes down from that hill. Doesn't all go to Washington Road. That, along with the lighting and the noise issues, I have the same concerns with having that in the backyard. We have a lot of bad experiences with what happened with Ace Hardware. I've done Brander Mill Road, and you can hear, lights are on all night, there's banging of metal all the time. They keep a lot of things stored in the back. We're just anticipating this is going to be the same thing happening one more time up against our stuff.
It is a challenge as you get your zoning. Reality is, somebody else owns that land. Will be developed sooner or later. How you mitigate the risk? How, 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 find a way to ensure that the property value of the property owner realizes that, but also it doesn't destroy the neighbors? And it is, it's a real, it's a delicate balance. A lot of times it's difficult to work through.
Your motion is second. Kind of meaning your motion to include, or if anything go forward, they have to clean that?
Recommend you tie that to like plan approved. When, no later than.
Because if it's?
But we can probably get that.
Overgrown and?
Why don't they just clean it out? Whether they do?
Have to look into that.
Even if none of this happens, I still need?
Absolutely.
That would make it a condition.
We can do that.
That was tied to something. Nothing's going forward until it's done. And that should mitigate water issues.
But no later than.
Okay. All right, now I'm in my motion to add a condition, clearing of the retention pond.
Questions? Motion second on the floor, all favor raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Lastly, here we have file VA 240501. I make a motion to approve the request for a variance for property located at tax map 082D, parcel 030A, to reduce structural buffers to 20 foot against tax map 082B, parcel 164, 25 foot against tax map 082B, parcels 165, 166, 167, subject to the conditions enumerated in the May 2, 2024 Planning Commission Report.
Second.
Hey, got a couple of things here. What's driving this is Comcast is proposing a new building on the site, and this is non-conforming due to a couple areas. They've got buffer requirements along the commercial zone property as well as the residential. So reduction of the buffer along here to the existing fence. And then basically the same thing here. They're going to add, there's chain link that will be supplemented on both that are going to be supplemented with slats, and additional landscaping will be provided here along the back with the residential areas. The structural buffers would not be required along this property line.
Questions? Motion is second on the floor, all favor raise your right hand. Motion carries. Mr. Couch? Hold on a second. I know we have no legal matters. Any requests for review by committee?
Yes, it has come to my attention that there may be a request for changes to the Gold Cross contract. And given the importance of this service to our citizens and county, I would like to request a review of the current contract and any changes.
Fair enough. Please take that and a request from the commission to review the current standing with Gold Cross and come back with a report.
Yes, sir, we'll do that.
Public comments? Executive session, have items we can do right here and now?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the agreement of purchase and sale for tax map 074130F and 069090.
Second.
Scott? We're buying land to make the park bigger on?
And for?
It's a purchase of 12 acres besides the future Gateway Regional Park, and that's, I believe that's primarily for the access.
Questions? All favor raise your right hand.
I make a motion to approve $17,900 to Atlantic Coastline Railroad Company, FKAC, or Coastline Railroad Company for G.P.I. number 0013704, parcel 120, to obtain right-of-way and/or easements for the Hardy McManus Road Widening Project.
Second.
The final parcel that needs to be closed on the Hardy McManus project in order to certify the right-of-way.
Hallelujah.
All in favor raise your right hand quickly.
I make a motion to approve $18,000 to Caitlin and Carlton Kreider, tax map 060063A, and $51,600 to Kurt Croker II, tax map 067739, to obtain right-of-way and/or easements for the Hereford Farm Road Widening Project.
Turn six closed. 40% complete with right-of-way acquisition.
Favor raise your right hand.
I make a motion to approve $3,525 to Brenda and Robert Price Jr., tax map 072D01, for the location moving expense payment.
Second.
They're all for the next three for relocation expenses?
From buying their property?
Yes.
Favor raise your right hand.
I make a motion to approve $2,925 to Alan and Joy Stewart, parcel 072A058, for relocation assistance payment.
Favor raise your right hand. Carries?
I make a motion to approve $39,898 to Andrea Stoddard, parcel 072A057, for rent supplement payment and relocation moving.
Favor raise your right hand. Carries?
I would like to say that while this does seem like a lot of money going out the door, we have taken homes and the right thing to do.
And I almost hit the gavel before we have one more motion.
I make a motion to approve...
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Agreed.